This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, May 2nd. Please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Lujinia Johnson Metropolitan AME Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence following the pledge.
Let us bow our heads please for a word of prayer. Father, in the blessed name of your son, Jesus, we come before your presence this morning, first of all, to say thank you for the bright sunshine of this brand-new day that you have allowed each of us to see. We thank you, oh God, for each of these leaders that have come, Lord, to be guided by your hand and to do your will in this part of your creation. God, we ask now, as we invoke your presence, that you will take full control. We ask for your blessings because without you, we can do nothing. So we ask, oh God, that your will be done, that every decision, oh God, every intent of our hearts will be to your glory. In the precious name of Jesus Christ, we pray. And the people of God, together agreed by saying, "Amen."
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. Two gentlemen in our community have recently died, and we would like to remember them in silent prayer. One is Art Slack, and the other is James Taylor Jr. I'm going to call on Councilman Williams to give us some information about Art Slack, and then also Councilman Manzi for James Taylor, and then we will hold our moment of silence for both of these gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask everyone to remember the family of Art Slack, a WWII veteran, ninety-six years old, longtime resident of Mobile, a founder of the Bay Bear Booster Club. He was part of the hockey team that many don't even remember here in Mobile, how long he's been here. But maybe most notably, he was known as a people person. He put people with people and made Mobile work. He did it through politicians and business leaders. He was a great friend to me, and I will miss him. He died on Wednesday, and we buried him on Saturday. Thank you.
Mr. Manzi?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we would hold in our memories through a moment of silence the memory of Dr. James Clifton Taylor Jr., former Mobile County Health official, former principal in the Mobile County Public School System, and pastor of the St. Joseph Missionary Baptist Church on Broad Street. Prolific man. He just happens to be the pastor of my father, one who's touched thousands upon thousands of lives, not only spiritually but educationally, and through his work at the Mobile County Health Department, the Teen Center, and other localities. And so I'm asking that we would keep the Taylor family and the St. Joseph Baptist Church family in our prayers, and certainly his hard work and efforts to better our community in our memory.
If you would, a moment of silent prayer.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody. It's great to see you here, and what a wonderful way to start our morning than with that Pledge of Allegiance. It's always fabulous when we have children in the audience because it just makes it that much more special, and we will meet these young people coming up shortly. We also will have a performance by the youngsters to my left over here from the Revelation Christian School, and if you all want to go ahead and start gathering up, we'll get you started. We're going to have you gather right here in front of us, so if y'all come on down, and I'll give the rest of my announcements while we're doing that. On our agenda today, we have some more capital improvement plan projects to tell you about. They will include pool deck repairs at J.R. Thomas Park, painting at Rickertby Park, and surveillance lights at Hillsdale Park, and then next week, we will take up the drainage design for Taylor Park. This is all continuing the 2017 Capital Improvement Plan work ongoing right now. This coming weekend, a gala will kick off for the three-year, two-hundredth anniversary of the state of Alabama and its admission as a state. It all kicks off right here in Mobile. The officials start. Carolyn Feltes is here with us today, and she'll provide some more details coming up shortly. The Mobile Symphony is in its final, is in its final week, this weekend, May 13th, at 7:30. Actually, next weekend, Saturday, May 13th, at 7:30, will be their final performance. It's at the Sanger Theater, so you all please go on out and support the Sanger and the Mobile Symphony's final concert of the season. Tickets are available online or at the box office over on Dolphin Street. So, are we just about ready here? These are the youngsters from the Revelation Christian School, and Councilman CJ Small has invited them here today. They've been touring our offices. They were upstairs with us on the ninth floor, and then they went to visit with the mayor on the tenth floor, and they even got to sit in my chair, and we took some pictures and we answered questions. Mayor, did they sit in your chair too?
Yes, it did.
Wow, so we've got a mayor and a president of the city council in our midst right here. Mr. Small, would you like to say anything in introduction?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to welcome the Revelation Missionary Baptist Church Christian School to city council with the principal, Mrs. Bertie Caster. You please stand, and also the pastor of the church, Pastor David Frazier. We do welcome you all, and we're looking forward to hearing you this morning. Thank you.
All right.
Very good. Excellent.
Thank you so much. That was great.
That's a sample that comes out of Mazeville.
Oh, fabulous. I see Mr. Richardson has got his hand on the microphone, so go ahead.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, I do. To Reverend Frazier and this great group of kids, and I just want to say that on Sunday at 3:00 at the MacAsaydow Amphitheater in Trinity Gardens, in the Trinity Gardens Park, we would have the Mobile Youth Symphony Orchestra on the stage. And I know this is a last-minute request, but I would love to have these kids on the stage. I would love to have them, because if they come and perform, they would also see other youth with these complicated instruments blending these sounds together that is tremendous. And the message to all of that is that if they can do it, I can too. And I would love to see, or I'd like you all to get some thought to that, to see whether or not you can bring these kids out at 3:00 this coming Sunday at the MacAsaydow Amphitheater in the heart of District 1. If you can do that, I would appreciate that. Please give it some consideration. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Richardson will give you his contact information so that y'all can get in touch with him directly, if that's okay? And I know Mr. Small has your contact information as well, so he'll get up with you and give you some more details, and hopefully you can make it. That would be great.
Jill has my contact information.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And we have some other youngsters who were sitting to my right. I'm going to call on Councilman Williams, if you will make the introductions.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It is really a pleasure to have the city council, the third, fourth, and fifth grade of Kate Shepherd here, the leaders of their school. It is located just off of Highway 90 on Burma Road. It is a prized school in District 4. And today, their sponsors are Mary Smith, I'm going to stutter a little bit here, and then a lady that everyone probably has seen at times. There was a gentleman, a civic leader, Jeff Newman, still around here arousing folks in neighborhoods everywhere. But Jeff Newman was longtime president or director of the Board of Villagers, and his daughter Caroline Newman is part of the group that I always contact if I want to read books or if I wanted to be a part of something, like many of these kids are on the spelling bee, and I've had the pleasure of watching them do amazing things onstage with very little time and a lot of stress. But if, Madam President, if you will allow, we have two, the president and vice president, that is Kendra Jordan and Jaylen Edney, they would like to just have a couple of words.
All right.
Come on up. It'd be great.
Good morning. My name is Kendra Jordan, and I'm the student council president of Kate Shepherd Elementary.
All right.
Hi. My name is Jaylen Edney, and I'm the vice president of Kate Shepherd Students Council.
Great.
Thank you for having us. We are honored to be here.
We would like to thank Mr. Williams for having us today and for always coming out and supporting our school. We appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can have all the students please stand along with the teachers and advisors. Good to have you here. And please come back to visit again. We love having the president and the vice president here with us, Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
Before we get into the rest of the agenda, I know this is sort of last minute, but David Clark is here with us today, and he is our CEO of Visit Mobile. He provided us with some information at our earlier meeting, our pre-conference meeting, dealing with tourism numbers. And David, if you don't mind, if you would just repeat that for the audiences here today.
You bet. Good morning.
Good morning.
Great news for Mobile. Received an email this morning from John Sharp with the Alabama Media Group with respect to the State of Alabama's tourism report for 2016. We have great news. Total number of visitors from Mobile grew 177,000 versus 15, 5.8% comparing to the state growth of 2.5%. The number of travelers staying in accommodations grew 103,000 or 5.8% compared to the state 2.5%. And occupancy rates for Mobile were almost up 2 points to 62.5% compared to the state of 59.6%. And really, the interesting thing with that is that our room night supply growth grew about 6,000, so that's really some really great stuff. Mobile travel expenditures grew to 1.08 billion or 5.3% or 54 million in spend, comparing, if you look at 14, we have grown 9.4% versus 14. The state's growth was 5.4%. Mobile is the fourth in the state with travel-related expenditures, so all of you continue to raise the bar, and we appreciate everyone's leadership very much. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and again, welcome to the city of Mobile, and we appreciate your efforts and look forward to working with you in the future. I know we have some other visitors here who are on the front row. I suspect the mayor is going to make these introductions, so I will let him do that, but we're happy to have you here. Ms. Lambert, go ahead.
Approval of minutes of April 25th. So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last week, I had the opportunity to join Coastal Alabama Partnership flying to Washington, DC. There were 30-plus elected officials, civic leaders, businessmen that went to DC to visit with our congressmen, senators, specifically to talk about the bridge project plus other opportunities that we have. We also had an opportunity to be hosted by Airbus. The great news coming from Airbus is that they're still to be pleased with the progress that's being made with the construction of the A320s at Brookley. So all in all, it was a very good trip, and it's a very worthwhile effort to collaborate between Mobile and Baldwin County on common issues to help the region move forward together because working together, we will accomplish a whole lot more than we will individually. So a very good trip. Tomorrow, we'll have the ribbon cutting of the new basketball court at Sage Park. I want to thank Commissioner Ludgood and Councilman Richardson and the city council for approving to do this. It's going to be very exciting to be able to ride by either on Sage or Dolphin and see who's playing basketball. But it's a very nice court, and it certainly helps complete the build-out of one of our premier parks, which is Sage Park. As you know from reading in the media or listening to the media, that we're in the process of searching for a new fire chief within the fire rescue department. We have five finalists, and those finalists, we have two deputy chiefs, Myron King and Ken Keller, and three district chiefs, Doug Cooper, Jeremy Lamie, and Paul Sealy. They, along with eight others, submitted strategic plans for the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. These are the five finalists, and they are being interviewed today, through will be interviewed today to next week prior to making a recommendation to me for approval. Only selection committee, I think it's very important to recognize that we have a, what I would call, a sterling group of qualified individuals to help make this selection. Dan Lumpkin, Dan, if you would raise your hand. Dan has been a business management consultant for over 35 years. His expertise is in the assessment of the competency of leaders, which he has done for many, many, many companies and some of the largest companies in America. So he brings a skill set to the table which would be hard to match. Also Jeff Carter. Jeff, you raise your hand. Most people know Jeff as the head of the innovation team, but what they don't know is that at the age of 19, he was maybe the youngest paramedic in the history of the state of Alabama. He was the associate director of EMS for eight years. He was 11 years as an adjunct professor at USA teaching EMS classes. They are joined by Chief Barber, which everyone knows his skill set, and rounding out and actually somebody that brings a skill set to the team, the assessment team, is Chief Jordan. I'm actually going to let Chief Barber step up to the podium and introduce Chief Jordan. But I'll say this, that just as a lead, and he was the first African-American to become deputy fire chief and fire chief in Montgomery. Now that in itself, people would think that's an accomplishment, but that pales to compare to what he has achieved since being the chief. They have achieved an ISO rating, which he can explain later, of one, which only 0.2% of the fire departments in America, 0.2%, achieve an ISO rating of one. Also, knowing that he is an Alabama fan, I would say that he among fire chiefs would be, to fire chiefs, what Nick Saban is to head coaches. So Chief Barber, I probably took all your thunder away, but I'll let you further the introduction.
Let me tell you, I think if we could talk forever, Madam President and members of the Mobile City Council, I have the distinguished honor of introducing Chief Milford Jordan from the Montgomery Fire Department, which he joined in 1985. In 2006, he was appointed as the fire chief by then-mayor Bobby Bright. I'm glad that we've got an audience full of young people here today because Chief Jordan's motto is be competitive, be motivated, and you can do whatever you put your mind to do. And that is a motto that he lives by. What we have engaged you with when I took over as executive director of public safety is to create the best fire department, and in order to do that, we have engaged one of the best fire chiefs in order for us to select the best person and expect nothing but the best from that person. He spent the last 11 years focused on making Montgomery Fire Rescue the best fire department in the southeast. In 2014, as the mayor stated, he was rated by the insurance service office as a Class I department, less than 0.2% of the 45,000 fire departments in this country. But even more significantly, it was a major accomplishment in that Montgomery Fire Rescue is the first ISO Class I department in the history of Alabama. Chief Jordan also serves on the Red Cross Board of Directors, the City of Montgomery Retirement Board, a graduate of Leadership Montgomery Class 27, City of Montgomery Executive Leadership Program. He has received numerous certifications in fire-related courses from the Alabama Fire College in Tuscaloosa and the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. He's an active member of the Alabama Fire Chiefs Association, the Southern Fire Chiefs Association, the Metropolitan Fire Chiefs Association, and the National Fire Chiefs Association. Honorable members of the city council, with great pleasure, I introduce you to Montgomery Fire Chief Billford Jordan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A road type, ma'am. I am honored to be here to assist the director and the mayor and the council and the city of Mobile as finding him a fire chief. The fire department is my passion. I didn't start out wanting to be a firefighter, I was looking for a job, and once I spent several years in the fire service, I knew this was my calling. So I'm very passionate about how we serve our community. There's over 1 million firefighters in the nation. Career department like the city of Mobile makes up about 300,000 firefighters, so this is just an extended area of my passion, is to come to the city of Mobile and help you guys find a fire chief. And I think with the candidates and the information I've been provided, I think you guys have a good fire chief to consider. And again, I'm honored to be asked to come and be a part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you here.
Madam President, I would make a comment that I was told by the chief that he actually had his turnout gear in the car, and that in the city of Montgomery, they don't ride short, because if he has to get on a truck.
Yeah, he's going to do it.
To fill it out, that's what he does.
Do you have your turnout gear with you?
I do.
Great. Well, keep, you know, keep posted.
He heard we were short, so he brought two sets.
And one's for you. Good. Hope you don't have to use it while you're here, but thanks for being here and being a part of the process. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you consider upping his pay and keeping him here?
Yeah, has he tried to recruit you yet?
That's what I'm talking about.
I actually did talk to Chief Jordan about it, but we couldn't afford his association fees with all this organization.
All right. Anything else, Mayor?
That's it.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Lambert.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for a way with the noise ordinance on June 10th on Jacob Drive.
So moved. Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Carolyn Feltes.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Honorable members of the city council, Mayor Simpson was here, and guests, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about the Alabama bicentennial. Alabama is going to celebrate the bicentennial of the state of Alabama. The actual birthday is in December 2019, so we're starting in 2017 here in Mobile, Alabama. And in case you're wondering why Mobile, Alabama, we're the oldest city in the state by a long way, because we were founded in 1702, so we have that honor, and it is an honor for us to be hosting this grand event here in the state, an historic event. The timeline for this bicentennial celebration in the state is to discover our places, honor our people, and share our stories. And as you can imagine, with all the beautiful places in Alabama and the wonderful people that we have, and the stories, the southern stories, oh my goodness, it's going to take a long time to do that, so that's why we're doing it for three years. The first up is us in Mobile, and we are exploring our places for 2017. That's where the bicentennial begins on Friday evening, May 5th, here in Mobile. In 2018, it's going to be honoring our people, and they're going to have the Alabama Heritage Festival in Birmingham. In 2019, it's sharing the stories, and there's going to be a constitutional convention bicentennial in Huntsville, Alabama. And then Montgomery will have a commemoration. And Alabama Day in the state of Alabama will be December 14th, 2019. Regarding this celebration here in the city, I found out some very interesting information that we have three organizations in the city of Mobile that are over 200 years old. One is the Mobile County Commission, another is the Mobile County Help Department, and the other is the Mobile District of the Corps of Engineers. They're all over 200 years old. So when I was doing all my research, I thought, this is really incredible here, so we're going to honor them with all of that. The main thing that I want to talk about today is the celebration that's going to be on May the 5th, and all you children are gone, oh, these children are here from Kate Shepherd. Y'all listen, because this is going to be really good. The celebration is going to be Friday, May 5th. It's going to be from 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock in the evening. It's going to begin in our brand-new, beautiful Mardi Gras park downtown, Fort Conde, now called the Colonial Fort of Mobile, the History Museum of Mobile, Mobile Carnival Museum will all be open, free of charge, children, tell your parents, free of charge. We're going to have face painting in the park.
All right, anything else, Mayor?
That's it.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Lambert.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for a way with the noise ordinance on June the 10th on Jacob Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Carolyn Feltes.
Good morning, Madam President, honorable members of the city council, Mayor Stimson was here, and guests, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about the Alabama bicentennial. Alabama is going to celebrate the bicentennial of the state of Alabama. The actual birthday is in December 2019, so we're starting in 2017 here in Mobile, Alabama. And in case you're wondering why Mobile, Alabama, we're the oldest city in the state by a long way, because we were founded in 1702. So we have that honor, and it is an honor for us to be hosting this grand event here in the state, an historic event. The timeline for this bicentennial celebration in the state is to discover our places, honor our people, and share our stories. And as you can imagine, with all the beautiful places in Alabama and the wonderful people that we have, and the stories, the southern stories, oh my goodness, it's gonna take a long time to do that. So that's why we're doing it for three years. The first up is us in Mobile, and we are exploring our places for 2017. That's where the bicentennial begins on Friday evening, May 5th, here in Mobile. In 2018, it's gonna be honoring our people, and they're gonna have the Alabama Heritage Festival in Birmingham. In 2019, it's sharing the stories, and there's gonna be a constitutional convention bicentennial in Huntsville, Alabama. And then Montgomery will have a commemoration. And Alabama Day in the state of Alabama will be December 14th, 2019. Regarding this celebration here in the city, I found out some very interesting information that we have three organizations in the city of Mobile that are over 200 years old. One is the Mobile County Commission, another is the Mobile County Help Department, and the other is the Mobile District of the Corps of Engineers. They're all over 200 years old. So when I was doing all my research, I thought, this is really incredible here. So we're going to honor them with all of that. The main thing that I want to talk about today is the celebration that's gonna be on May the 5th. And all you children are gone, oh, these children are here from Kate Shepherd, y'all listen, because this is gonna be really good. The celebration is gonna be Friday, May 5th, it's gonna be from 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock in the evening. It's gonna begin in our brand-new, beautiful Mardi Gras Park downtown, Fort Conde, now called the Colonial Fort of Mobile, the History Museum of Mobile, Mobile Carnival Museum will all be open, free of charge, children, tell your parents, free of charge. We're gonna have face painting in the park, balloon sculptures, music, they're gonna teach you how to make slime, how many of y'all like slime? My little granddaughter loves slime, so they're gonna teach you how to do that, in case you don't already know that. Gonna have face painting and balloons in the park. And then, at 8:00, we are going to have a spectacular fireworks display on the river, from the barges on the river. I asked for the display to be like Disneyland. Anybody who's been to Disneyland and seen that celebration by the castle in the park, that's what I asked for, so we will see if they deliver it, they have promised me they will. After that, there will be a concert about 8:15 in Cooper Riverside Park by the band I Sing. So it's going to be a wonderful night, y'all may have seen these posters, any of y'all, all of you on the commission, I know Joel has seen them, he told me. So these posters are everywhere, it tells you all about it. And we hope that a lot of people can come and take advantage of this, because sometimes it's just too costly to pay admission to these things, and so on Friday night, you can go at no charge and just stay as long as you want and do whatever you would like to do. I want to thank, Mayor Stimson's gone already, but I want to thank him, he's been very supportive of letting us use Mardi Gras Park and other places. Also, Michonne Trent is on the committee with me, and Ann Rambo, who is the events person with Mobile, and she is fabulous, and Greg Cipriani, they have helped so much, and many other people have contributed to this. So we hope that this will be a wonderful event, and that it will show everybody, David Clark, are you still here, that in Mobile, we know how to celebrate, so they need to visit Mobile, right? Thank y'all very much.
That's fabulous, Carolyn, thank you so much.
Ross Holliday regarding Resolution 30018.
Is Mr. Holliday here? Okay. Pardon me? Ms. Irene, you have a question?
I just want to discuss the constellations of your state road cars, it's one day older than the state of Alabama.
Oh, okay, thank you, Ms. Irene, appreciate that.
Ordinance is-
Madam President.
Go ahead, Ms. Lambert, go ahead.
Ordinance is held over 30018, change the boundaries of the westernmost entertainment district in downtown Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over 21242, authorize contract of Gulf Coast fence for various parks, ball field fencing improvements. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
01244, authorize a right-of-way use agreement with Sprint Communications Company for the purpose of installing fiber optic cable and related facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I would like this to go into the record, and this is, that this is for underground conduit and cable, and no, I guess it's the 5G that is gonna turn the corner, but we've not come up with any authorization or user rights-of-way agreements. It's my understanding that the city has retained counsel on that in order to be proactive, but that was the concern that I had initially about this contract, because of the understanding that that will be coming to town, it is the future, it means cars that do not require drivers, that we're hearing about in other parts of the country. So we want to be prepared, and just for the record, this does not include the 5G fiber optics or infrastructure. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21245 and 246 are authorizing contracts with LTS Development Group for nuisance abatement, demolition of structures with lead-based paint, Marine Street, Pillen Street, St. Charles Street, and Yorkshire Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21247, authorize contract with S&amp;S Sprinkler Company for Western Administration Complex Fire Protections System Installation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
25248 and 249, authorize easement to Alabama Power Company for guide wire supporting a new power pole, and for upgrading existing underground conduit and wires.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
46251, honorarily named Crawford Lane as Charles Curtis Senior Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolution's being introduced for the first time, 37252 through 6255.
Motion to suspend rules for a meeting consideration of Resolution 37252 through 60255.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There's no objection, I'll take the first three together.
That's fine.
37252, 253, and 254, recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class Two Package Store License for Halls Mill Liquors on Demetropolis Road, for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premises-only license for Halls Mill Shell on Demetropolis Road, and for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class One License to Touchdown Tavern on US Highway 90 West.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37, oh, I missed that one, sorry. 37254, recommended approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail. Oh, I did that?
Then we did that one, yes.
Sorry.
It's just the 264.
Yeah, 6255, approve award of special bonus to Jeffrey Bodie and Mickey Glover as part of the mayor's incentive program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolution's being introduced for the- Oh, the real treat, yeah, that's the one I missed.
Yeah, the add-on.
That's the one that I missed, yeah.
264.
37264, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license to 2017 Mobile Grill Cheese Meltdown. So moved.
Seven.
All in favor of the-
Move for a meeting consideration.
No, it was included.
It was on there. Yeah.
It was included.
Yeah, all in favor of the grilled cheese?
Aye.
Opposed? Could use one about right now.
CIP resolution's being introduced for the first time, 21256 through 21258.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for a meeting consideration of Resolutions 21256 through 21258.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21256, authorize contract with J&amp;A Contracting for JR Thomas Park Pool Concrete Deck Replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
I just want to assure the residents that live in the MLK community that this will go toward making certain that that pool is ready for our young people, for anyone who would want to avail themselves of this recreational amenity, and I'm appreciative of all of the staff, Ms. Harden, and everyone else's work to ready this agenda item so quickly.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21257, authorize contract with Marion's Painting Contractors for Rickery Park Recreation Center Painting.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
Want to also let the residents in the Rickery Park area know that this is one of the first steps that we're making to revitalize the park there. The space will be, the center there will be painted both on the inside and the outside. There'll be a subsequent agenda item that will provide for a new basketball court and playground equipment. We're gonna work to make this one of the more premier parks in our district, it's gonna take us time, but we're systematically working toward improving all of these park amenities that we have in District Two, and we ask for your continued patience as we move forward.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21258, authorize contract with CRB Surveillance for Hillsdale Community Center Security Camera Installation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I would like to say that we are continuing with the surveillance cameras, we've already put surveillance cameras at other recreation centers, so we are finally getting to the western part of the city for some recreation centers and putting up these surveillance cameras. We are also working on shade structures in 2018, so work going on in parks in District Seven, look forward to seeing all of these improvements over in Hillsdale. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21259.
My council rules, this resolution will live for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41260, call for public hearing to rezone property in 4514 and 4518, Dauphin Island Parkway, northwest corner of Dauphin Island Parkway and Alba Avenue, from R1 to B3, scheduled May 30th. 41261, call for public hearing to consider the application of Arlene Pedway doing business as quick shuttle for shuttle service, scheduled May 16th. 41262, call for public hearing to assent to the vacation of an alley running from South Claiborne Street to South Franklin Street between Government Street and Church Street, scheduled May 30th. 41263, call for public hearing to consider a vacation of right-of-way fee as a condition of the vacation of an alley running from South Claiborne Street to South Franklin Street between Government Street and Church Street, scheduled May 30th. So moved.
Second.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcement.
All right, let's start on the end with Mr. Manzi.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by recognizing the hard work of Representative Victor Gaston. The House has recently passed a bill which would reestablish the tax incentive for the rehabilitation, preservation, or development of certified historic structures. And as many of you know, a lot of those structures are in District Two, and a lot of those structures have been saved from demolition and have been added back to productive productivity on our tax rolls as a result of having this historic tax credit, and I'm appreciative of his leadership, the leadership of everyone in our local delegation in moving this particular bill forward, and I'm hopeful that it go, that now that it goes to the Senate, that the Senate will move expeditiously to reconsider it and extend it as well. I'd like to make a request of Mr. West, if I could, and I'll also be bringing this up to Mayor Stimson, it has been brought to my attention pretty much in every medium possible, Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter, at the local grocery store, Winn-Dixie, here in Government Plaza. Citizens are concerned about the transfer of the market at the square from Cathedral Square to Mardi Gras Park. Now, they have presented a litany of reasons as to why they feel that Mardi Gras Park might not be as conducive to a great experience as Cathedral Square might have been. I'll certainly discuss that with you all at length, but I did make the commitment that I would bring this up, that there are concerns from both vendors, there are concerns from restaurant and bar owners who count accounted on that traffic to leave Cathedral Square and then go and patronize the restaurants and bars. They spend so much time building that up and really getting it in sync, and I'm hopeful that some consideration would be given, maybe having two, where you can have something at Mardi Gras Park, but allow those who've spent so much time building what's going on at Cathedral Square to continue. And so, on behalf of many citizens in District Two, that is a concern, and I'm hopeful that we'll have an opportunity to dialogue further about it, and maybe a path forward can be found. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manzi, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to come back to the kickoff of the Alabama bicentennial, which Ms. Feltes so ably told us about. This is an important event for the state of Alabama and for the city of Mobile, it's, we should all feel honored that the organizing committee has decided to kickoff, honored but appropriate, that the organizing committee has decided to kickoff this three-year celebration here in the port city. It is the oldest city in the state of Alabama, it is appropriate that this celebration begin in this city. And a lot of work and planning has gone into this three-year celebration, and particularly the kickoff here in Mobile. Ms. Feltes is ably, ably, ably headed up these efforts, she's had some good people working with her. But the event, this Friday night, promises to be a great event, she's stepped through all the various stages of it. But I hope all of our citizens will come out Friday night from, what is it, 6:00 to 10:00, Carolyn? Downtown, it's gonna be in several different areas, Mardi Gras Park, Fort Conde, Cooper Riverside Park, as you said, the Gulf Quest will be open. Oh, it won't? Okay, I stand corrected on that. But in any event, it'll be, it'll be a great event, and I hope all of our citizens will join us in kicking off this important three-year celebration of Alabama's entering the Union in 1819. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and let's go back to Mr. Manzi real quick.
I just couldn't let this opportunity pass. Ms. Feltes, thank you again for all that you're doing. I am so pleased that the kickoff of this three-year celebration is in Mobile, and that the kickoff here in Mobile will be entirely in District Two. I just wanted to make that note for the record.
I wondered if you would note-
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
All right. Okay, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to also note for the record that 13 years before Alabama became a state, the Stone Street Baptist Church had already organized in 1806. It is the oldest Baptist church in the state of Alabama. I am a member of that church, and I would like for you to note that, and I do believe it would be important to find all of these institutions that were alive before 1819, when Alabama became a state.
No, no, he, Mr. Richardson has been a member since 1806.
And it's in District Two as well. Throw that out.
I'm making a note of this.
Make a note of it, I think.
I may call you so that we can talk further.
Okay, and I think it's-
I did not find this in my research.
Well, because I think we're still trying to hide from some of our history.
Oh, okay.
History is what it is, history is the record, you can't undo history.
No, you can't.
And I'm just saying, that's what happened in 1806, it was organized by slaves. In fact, we're gonna leave here, we're gonna leave here at the council meeting, we're going to Joshua Kennedy's house here on Government Street. Joshua Kennedy is the man who released this, who freed the slave that organized the Stone Street Baptist Church. His house, we're going over to his house, and when Church Street ends at Washington Avenue, you're at the graveyard, we started as a bush arbor right there in 1806. Just wanted to say.
We are gonna talk, I'm gonna get in touch with you, so that we can update all that we know now in Bridgeport.
Yeah, on that note, the truth would set us all free.
Yes, it would.
Just wanted to get, yeah.
Our guys will be interested in this, Mr. Richardson.
Okay.
And Montgomery.
And I am the historian for the Stone Street Baptist Church, and my research was accepted by the US Department of the Interior, we do have the shield up there honoring us.
You will be hearing from my-
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, did not know any of that.
Okay, and that is in District Two, I don't want to take anything from it.
Okay, we're back in District Two, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Get custody, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, ma'am. I was out of town on last Friday when they had this Hercules event in District One, the groundbreaking for Publix in a food desert. And my understanding is that this groundbreaking went off very well. I heard back from the people at Publix, their headquarters, they were very much satisfied with what happened last Friday. I heard from the developer, and he was singing hallelujah on what's- I heard from the developer, and he was singing hallelujah on what happened at the groundbreaking ceremony. I wanna first of all thank Lisa Carol Lambert, our city clerk, for standing in for me at the groundbreaking. And I think I worked Lisa overtime because I was also scheduled to give the commencement address at Remington College. I emailed her the address and told her to go head on over to Remington and deliver the commencement exercise speech, and she did go over there, and at the speech, she got a standing ovation over there. I just, I had another one for Franklin Street, I didn't send her that. I caught the plane to come home and do that one myself, but I was thinking about sending her on over to Franklin Street to take care of that one too, but anyway, I'd like to commend her. I'd like to commend all my fellow council members for coming over there, and the mayor, and members of the administration for being there at the groundbreaking at Publix. It was a tremendous event. If you go by there now, you'll see that the contractor is busy building this store, and we expect long before Christmas to be shopping at the store. The mayor may mention of this, and I just wanna reiterate this, that tomorrow at three o'clock, we're gonna be at the Sage, at the Herndon Sage Park, opening up the basketball court. We already have, already have some competing teams waiting on us to cut the ribbon and open that up. And so, Paul, I would just like to make note they have two gates at the, the court is fenced in, and there are two gates to where you can enter the park. I don't want no lock on the gate. I want the court to be open, everything up there is open. You can play any of those sports anytime of night you go up there. So I don't want us to get to the gate and put no lock on the gate. Open the gate, take the lock off. Once we cut the ribbon, throw the locks away. Leave the court open so people could play. Took us fifty years to get a basketball court at the court at Sage Park, and I don't wanna start off with no lock on it. Set the people free, let them play ball. So tomorrow, three o'clock, we're asking the citizens from all over the city to come together with us at Sage Park and watch this team play. I would have my basketball with me, I intend to shoot some hoof myself. On Sunday, this coming Sunday, in the Trinity Gardens Park, we're gonna have our second annual Mobile Symphony Youth Concert. It's gonna take place at the amphitheater in the Trinity Gardens Park. We're asking citizens from, especially from the Trinity Gardens community, but from all over the area, bring the children out and let them see these children play these instruments. It's, I was there last year, it was a meltdown. Even in the rain, we packed the house out, so that's why I wanted the Revelation group to come to be a part of this Sunday if they can. I hope they can come and do that. And this coming Monday, and this is big, this coming Monday, we're gonna break ground for the Three Mile Creek Greenway. Construction is, we're gonna start construction this coming Monday, and we, it's gonna start at the Tricentennial Park, that's what, that is what's so important. It's gonna start at the Tricentennial Park. For those who don't know, you get, you come straight here to Stanton. You take Stanton to the foot of here, when you cross Three Mile Creek, you are there, look over to the right, you got a beautiful park over there. In fact, since I've been on this council, we have had two new parks. Tricentennial Park, District One, Mia Street Park, District One. Those have been the two new parks, and this is why, we call it Tricentennial because we opened it up in two thousand and two for the tricentennial celebration of this city. But we're asking the citizens to come out to the groundbreaking. We're gonna open up the new Crichton Popeyes Thursday, got a new Popeyes opening up in Crichton on Thursday, and citizens are gonna start eating more chicken. Got some chicken coming on up there. Stop by there yesterday, and it's open, but it's open for train, they're just training their hip, but I was told by the manager, come Thursday, they're gonna sell the chicken, so I just wanna announce that Popeyes will be open in Crichton on Thursday. That's about it, Madam President, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. Last week I mentioned about a celebration that was going to take place on Wednesday, so now we're talking about almost a week, but it was a wonderful celebration because it thanked all the volunteers that are essential at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. The winner of Volunteer of the Year is Barbara Boddie, and I noticed the same name, last name, as someone who was recognized through the mayor's office as a police officer. I'm assuming with such an unusual last name spelled B-O-D-D-I-E, perhaps they're kin. And Barbara has been a volunteer instructor of aerobics. It's a very, very popular class, and she's been there from the beginning of the center's birth, which goes back to two thousand and eight, so we thank her for her dedication and her service to that center. Also, would like to remind everybody about the May twenty-seventh pops concert, freak concert, which is Memorial Weekend, it's a Saturday at seven P.M. at Medal of Honor Park in the, in the Mobile County Bicentennial Pavilion. Please make plans to be part of that wonderful event. And also, this is kind of out in the future, but June fifteenth will be a District Six meeting. I've invited the chief of police, who has accepted, and also the public safety director, I think he was so brand-new that requests might have landed elsewhere on his desk, but hoping that Chief Barbara, as our public safety director, will be present to engage the community, and also having an introduction of the Citizens Police Advisory Council. It will not be one of their sessions, but just an opportunity for the group to introduce themselves, for people to get to know the District Six representative, and also for them to give information on what that committee does, and in the near future after that, we will hopefully have, conduct one of their meetings. But it will be the topic of public safety again June fifteenth at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, starting at six-thirty. Thank you.
And of course, Mrs. Rich is the recipient of a very well-deserved award. She received it over the weekend from the League of Women Voters for Transparency in Government. This award was presented to her during the League's conference, which was held here in Mobile, so a big congratulations to Mrs. Rich.
Thank you, and I really would like to express my appreciation to the League of Women Voters. The state convention was in town, and they outdid themselves at that reception, and it was truly an honor, and I'm very humbled by that award, so I, you know, like to publicly thank them for their trust in me. Thank you.
Alright, before we head down the way, Mr. Davis had one more thing?
Yes, I apologize for asking to come back to me, but something Ms. Rich mentioned reminded me that the Police Citizens Advisory Committee is rotating its meetings around the various city council districts, and this month will be meeting in District Five. This will be on Wednesday, May seventeenth at six P.M. It will be at the Catholic Social Services Building on Florida Street, which is between Imogene, on this part of Florida Street, which is between Imogene Street and Airport Boulevard. So that's Wednesday, May seventeenth, six o'clock P.M. at the Catholic Social Services Building. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam President. This coming Saturday, May the sixth, the Mobile United with Hostess Community Walk at the Doyle Park at nine o'clock A.M. Inviting all the citizens in District Three, especially along the Dolphin Island Parkway area, to come out to Doyle Park for the community walk. Again, this would take place at nine o'clock A.M. Also on Saturday, May the sixth, at B.C. Rain High School from ten A.M. until three P.M. Will be the D.I.P. Annual Sausage Festival. The South Brookley United Methodist Church is sponsoring this event, which is a community festival. There will be plenty of music, entertainment from the University of Mobile, B.C. Rain High School Chores, the band, local bands, singers, and choirs. There will be plenty of children, activities, and games with local craft vendors and booths. Inviting all the citizens, not only on D.I.P., but throughout District Three and the city of Mobile. There will be plenty of sausage, dogs, and hot dogs, and drinks. The funds that will, that will be raised will be distributed to United Methodist Inter-City Mission, Doeman Wesley, University of South Alabama Wesley Foundation, and other national charities. Again, this would take place this coming Saturday at the B.C. Rain High School from ten A.M. until three P.M. Also, on Saturday, May the twentieth, from nine A.M. to eleven A.M., the Saint Andrews Episcopal Church, which is located on eighteen-fifty-four Staples Road, will be passing out beans and rice, inviting all citizens to come out to Saint Andrews on May the twentieth from nine A.M. to eleven A.M., and they will pass, will be passing out beans and rice until it is all gone, and no questions will be asked, and remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Alright, Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. It was my honor today, this last weekend, to represent the city in welcoming the Air and Army National Guard to the city of Mobile. It's an annual meeting, but I don't know that since I left the military, wow, I don't know how long ago it's been now, fourteen years ago, that I've seen so many general officers and colonels and sergeant majors in one place, and just honored to be able to say hello to them this past Saturday. Tomorrow, we say a final goodbye to Captain Howells, wife of Dee. Captain Howells, y'all know, is the Sea Lord and a longtime military leader in our town, retired captain out of the Navy. So I just ask that, although we have already recognized Dee formally in our meetings, that everybody think about the family tomorrow as we, as we celebrate and recognize her, her life here, and we're gonna be doing that at Christ United Methodist Church tomorrow morning at ten A.M. I think that some of my colleagues will be joining me. Also, tomorrow, we'll be celebrating the, the business of the year in Tillman's Corner. The mayor's the speaker, and I look forward to being in Tillman's Corner tomorrow at eleven-thirty for that celebration. It's, it's kind of a busy week, but I think we must point out and continue to remind everyone that as those red dots pop up on the map called FixMobile. FixMobile is the website for our CIP program. That as those red dots pop up, and that one of them might not be on your street, that does not mean that you're not receiving benefit. Sometimes it's a drain that is going to prevent further damage to our infrastructure. Been getting a lot of calls, why am I gonna, you know, when am I gonna get that on my street? We have to realize that we're prioritizing, we have hundreds of millions of dollars of work to be done. We will continue. The only way that we're gonna know that your street needs to be fixed, or a sign needs to be straightened, or a light needs to be fixed, is that you must report it to three-one-one. Some think that you can call the councilman, call the council lady, and say, I need this done, and speed the process up. Actually, you've slowed it down, you've slowed it down a bit, because you could have called directly to three-one-one and started the process immediately when you thought of it, rather than when you were able to get the council member on the phone or return email to get the process started. So please help us by calling three-one-one, get that red dot on your street. We're gonna get to every single problem, and we'll do so with the help of every citizen. Thank you, Madam President.
Alright, thank you. This past Friday, the Village of Spring Hill and the children in the community held their annual Sidewalk-a-thon. They raised forty thousand dollars, which is amazing. These children get out every year, and they solicit funds to help go toward matching grants and helping to build or continue building sidewalks in their neighborhood. Joel and I were both out of town, we had to miss it this year, it's the first one I've had to miss, but maybe we need to keep missing it, they did a lot better without us. A great turnout and raised a lot of money, so congratulations to everyone who was involved in the Sidewalk-a-thon, all of the volunteers, and especially the children who got out and raised the money to help continue building sidewalks in their neighborhood. I also want to just say a little something about the work that's going on on Ziegler Boulevard forever. I have been talking about the need for widening Ziegler, and when is it going to start? Well, it started. It's going to take some time before we actually see construction work. Right now, they're preparing the medians, which are on either side of Ziegler Boulevard, and that requires taking out some trees and vegetation. All of this was approved a long time ago by the Tree Commission, so the folks with Aldott are just getting these medians prepared so that they can widen Ziegler, and I think everybody is excited by the fact that they're actually seeing some movement, and we look forward to seeing the actual construction start this year. So again, looking forward to it, and if you were wondering what's going on on Ziegler, we're getting ready for the widening of the Ziegler. Also, had asked Nick Amberger, our city engineer, the status about the McGregor sidewalks. If you all have driven up McGregor recently, you know we're putting in sidewalks and curbs and gutters. It's a project combining both District Five and District Seven, and we are about a third of the way complete. We're going from Dolphin Street up toward Old Shell Road, and it looks fantastic. So we'll look forward to the project, actually getting into the District Seven portion of the project, and that should be starting very soon. Anyone else? Any other announcements, discussion? Alright, with that then, we are adjourned.